Good morning. Testing, testing. I'm gonna have Veranda talk to testing on this so you can see, can hear you.
You get any criminals rounded up this weekend? That's sad. You get a, did you get it, wait on the email from the son Sarah or what?
He said you're a little quiet. Do we need to speak closer? I don't know.
Well, it is nine o'clock. We've called this meeting to order. Please rise for invocation and lang salute.
Good night. Good Lord, come today. Thank you for another day that was not promised us. Thank you for a wonderful weekend and the thanks for us being here together. Let's continue to do the work for you. We just praise your name here. Amen.
Join me in the prayers. Our closing allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have minutes of August fourth.
Make the motion that Joe was read.
Second, motion had been made and seconded to approve the August fourth minutes as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, Mr. Markham and Mr. Conley, and Mr. Caddo Bushes. Any miscellaneous items from the audience? Hearing none, we'll move on to item five A, discussion possible action, single audit requirement notification from the state of Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management. This may have typically been signed by the chairman without going through a meeting, but I feel it's important to run through a meeting. And this, we did not receive over $750,000 from, or for federal expenditures over fiscal year 2025 and are not subject to single audit requirements. So I would entertain a motion to approve this authorizing the chairman to execute on behalf of the board.
Did Max need to look at this, or?
Well.
How's that work since it's, first time seeing this?
It's just for, yes, we either did expand, we had federal expenditures over $750,000 and we did not.
Obviously, yes, sir, okay.
So, so it, it makes us have to do a special audit or not. So I don't know that that's something that Max would need to look at.
Make a motion to approve, let the chairman sign it out with board.
Second, motion had been made and seconded to approve this single audit requirement notification form stating we did not receive federal expenditures over $750,000. Authorizing chairman to sign on behalf of the board. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Caddo Bushes. Item B, discussion possible action memorandum of understanding for domestic abuse response team, or DART, on call advocacy services provided by Payne County Sheriff's Office between Wings of Hope and my crisis services and the Board of County Commissioners of Payne County. And DART is a domestic abuse response team. Have anything to say about it, Chair?
There are several counties and agencies likely to statewide that do the same sort of deal. They didn't agree over there, they are, they are advocacy. And this is the latest one, it may change to be itself presented.
So, I'm all for it. So if they call 911, then it goes to, does that work? Like if you guys need it immediately, they have another number they call or how?
So if we require someone, so we have a system in place now is there's kind of a hotline that they can call. This will provide a avenue for a, if he needs to be able to call him directly, get a response.
Nice.
Immediately versus over the phone.
Okay.
Hey, so, I mean, obviously everything's circumstantial.
Make a motion to approve memorandum of understanding for domestic abuse response team between Payne County Sheriff's Office and Wings of Hope.
It's been signed in.
Second, um.
No, no, there's all three signatures.
That's what, yeah, that's what I thought I saw it back, so, yeah.
And that is between the Board of County Commissioners. Motion has been made and, did you say, Mr. Conley?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of County Commissioners and the Wings of Hope for the sheriff's office. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Caddo Bushes. Item C, discussion possible action resolution 2025 dash one, seventy, no three trucks. This is for a road within District One. This had previously been a bypass when Cushing was doing all the work downtown to have the trucks go that way down Uchee. And since they have reopened the road that they were working on, the trucks have not, that continued with the habit of the bypass. And so this is to alleviate, then using that, this is placing no three truck signs off of Highway thirty-three going south on Uchee. And the intersection of Ninth Street, Esco and Texaco.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five and seventy.
Second, motion had been made and seconded to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one seventy. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caddo Bushes. Any update on the Payne County video system?
Um, no, everything's seen through right now. Uh, I think the one thing I misspoke last time was the GRDA shelter. They're looking at getting it placed today. I did talk to Motorola about the, the fence at Yale. I did confirm that it is not in the contrast of work.
Okay. All right. Any ingress egress agreements?
None.
I have one, that's with Steve and Ally Thompson, and this is on Forty-fourth. Uh, there's severe washing in the area, and we're wanting to go inside, inside the landowner's property to try to seep that or put hay on it, smooth it up to keep it from washing off their property under his fence and washing out our ditch. It's a very sandy area south of Yale. Uh, so I would like authorization to go beyond the right of way to attempt to eliminate this washing issue that we've had ongoing.
Make a motion to approve the ingress egress, ingress egress agreement, V one.
Motion had been made and seconded to approve the ingress egress agreement as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caddo Bushes? All right, we have item F, one, removal of equipment item for inventory declaration of surplus, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one fifty-six. Uh, it's a bunch of fire gear, engine type fire, tending the nozzles, uh, fire bunker pants, and a pump. And then we have resolution for disposing of that same equipment. So Resolution one twenty-five dash one fifty-six, one fifty-seven, one sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, one sixty-four, one sixty-five, one sixty-six, one sixty-seven, one sixty-eight, and one sixty-nine.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five and fifty-six, fifty-seven, the one sixty-one through one sixty-nine.
Second, motion had been made and seconded to approve the stated resolutions. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Caddo Bushes. Item J, appointment requisition receiving officers. We have one, got the sheriff's office for a new account that was created. Uh, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Cause it said current requisitioning officers, so that kind of threw me.
Well, they, we had to add a new account because they're about basically money, and that's what this account is.
Okay. So, new requisition officers, Joe Harper, Marvin Norris, uh, new receiving officers, Stacy Nixon, Rob Anderson, Lawrence, Joe Harper, Marvin Norris, Stacy Nixon, uh, Rob Anderson.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, requisition receiving officers.
Second, motion had been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Caddo Bushes. Item H, cash appropriations.
I have passed out cash appropriations that have been certified by the treasurer's office above August fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve cash appropriations as presented?
Second.
Motion had been made and seconded to approve the cash appropriations as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Caddo Bushes. And item I, discussion possible action on prior department prerequisition request. I have one from Engels Fire to lock supply, and it is for pipe to build a holder for banners, and the amount is $200.
Can I see it? I didn't even see that one.
Make a motion to approve the fire department prerequition request. Here's an chairman sign on behalf of the board. Clear, second. Motion had been made and seconded to approve the prerequisition authorizing chairman sign on behalf. All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Caddo Bushes. Item J, purchase orders.
Purchase orders to be paid today for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five are $76,787.39. For fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, a total of $264,829.42. And then we have a payroll for taxes of $64.16, payroll for nineteen thirty-two, where grand total is $483.48.
Make a motion to approve upon signature.
Second, motion had been made and seconded to approve purchase orders upon signature. Is there any other discussion? I did have one question on, on the diversified C T I, that is, uh, internet or what is that? Uh, IT service?
The various C T I.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it's a, uh, it's actually a security, um, internet security or monitoring service.
Okay. So that, do they provide IT services as well, or is it just?
Both.
Okay.
Both. They're working with Josh to prevent, uh, any packing.
Is it, is this, this one type charge, or is it?
Uh, yes, and it's, then there's a, the well initial, and then there's a monthly, and depending on internet usage is, you're at that monthly, so we got to figure out what that monthly charge would be.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you. All in favor of approving purchase orders, signing to approve, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caddo Bushes. Item K, monthly reports of officers.
I have several. I have various reports from the treasurer's office for the month of July. The court clerk has a, for their records management and observation, has an ending balance of $74,955.48. And for their official depository court fund and revolving fund, they have an ending balance of $1,275,026.31. The health department has an ending depository balance of $1,515. The assessor's office has an ending balance of $1,745. And the county clerk, oh no, the sheriff, the sheriff has an ending balance of $84,068.82. Let me make sure, not everything. The county clerk has an ending balance of $169,371.87. That is all I have.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, motion had been made to acknowledge the run, monthly reports. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Caddo Bushes. Any further comments on the board? Hearing none, is there any road crossings?
None.
Any new business? Hearing none, that will sum up the meeting except for Tom. Thanks for your presence.
Should be coming this week summer, get that fixed.
Awesome.
I told the people last week, they don't work today, cause I was gone Friday.
Okay, awesome. That's great.
I'd like them to do it.
Thank you, thank you.
The woman.
Sit around.
The woman will be around.
Okay.
Come back. I'm just gonna take out those carpet tiles.
Okay.
Take them out and replace them, and then they showed me a spot somewhere else I want them to fix too.
Okay.
If there is that, kind of by your trash can or your kitchen area, there's a big flog of something that's still.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
So we're gonna have to take that out too.
Oh, awesome. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Go on. All right, same. It was leaked, still not fixed, but they, they fixed it in a way where it's not leaking into the wall, anyways, makes sense. So it's leaking directly down through the ground.
Why is it still leaking?
The part was a, it had a, so the fums, it had the right work, like a, one of the rubber seals.
Right.
Had a crack at it. When they put it in, it just go, kind of found it the next day, so they, they've got to reorder that. But it's, it's barely leaking.
Okay, good.
You're saying it was, it's not like it was, but.
Yeah.
So.
It's always.
That's why I want to give you that though. So it's, it's only the same time this week. It should be a lot of people in there.
Well, we appreciate you, so.
Well.
Also fixing it.
It's been a mess.
At least it wasn't everybody last time.
That is by, that is exactly right. At least it wasn't everybody.
Yeah.
I.
It, it could be worse.
It's for real.
You know. Just think, they're getting all the worst stuff, though.
Oh, I'm, I'm, don't even mention that. That's, that's, it's just seven months, man, a long time ago.
We've got this.
I love it. It's been awesome. I like figuring things out like that, so, but, I didn't get that, cause you were gone when I was down there, I think you were.
Yeah, I don't leave last.
You were at somebody, so, I was like, and I was gone Friday.
Okay.
So, I don't know if you're back there or not, but.
Got it.
Yeah.
Well, very, very good. Let's get signed. See you in a bit.
She's got a copy over there, if you want to type. The very loving. For the project. I think we're just, uh, say the person outside of that. Is that what we have?
They're still working on the courthouse road.
Oh, wait. Take them longer than that?
Uh, yeah. They've run into a lot of issues.
Oh, they, that's what caused it?
Nothing around that, but they're not, it's not my fault they didn't figure it out. Yes, it's. What they've figured out is concrete from fifty, sixty years ago, built better concrete than it is now, and that's what they're running into. Drawing through, I'm not understanding.
Right now?
Drawing through the parts of the concrete out there, trying to connect the road, so. And then they keep running all my sprinkler pants on the courthouse lawn and breaking. And they smashed up some sidewalk, but they didn't know, that happened like they wanted, but they let me, I did a big crane, and it's the easiest access. I worry about concrete, sprinkler heads that have filled here and out, cause they're, they're in the water loss, they have water leaks in their loss and all the heat. And that landscape over there, it's, yeah.
Most people think it's the data, gun it past the court, or the admin door apparently.
College is back.
Right. That's actually probably it.
But is it?
I think it is this week.
It was this week.
Yeah, but go to Walmart, you'd think it'd be, it was last week.
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, everybody's already here. Not everybody, but.
I know, you know, everyone said that Walmart, they gross more money, they don't make it.
They do what?
They gross more money, but they don't make it.
Oh, I believe it. I bet.
Well, you're going there now.
I want to walk out of there with all house, whole stuff.
Is it this week or the last week?
Because the fourth school starts.
School this week? Is that when, high school starts, marine starts Tuesday, because my son goes to marine, then high school starts Thursday. But I think it's probably, O S U, O S U should, they're usually, like, I think they're probably next week, but it's all moving, so you can rush it up, because.
Pretty crazy how big of a traffic chain.
Well, they lost one of those movements twenty-five years ago, go to Walmart.
I didn't see my sales tax allocations here.
Do you not? No, I do not.
I mean, like, it doesn't really matter, cause that's not something we sign, but I didn't see mine.
Provide in there?
Uh.
Or need in there?
Both of yours, sure.
I would be so. Have you asked?
I, if it's not a big, I mean, I sent him to, to, I sent him to Glenn.
Okay.
How do we say that? Howard.
Are you asking? Maybe I can work on it. Yes.
Well, we we generally have everybody signed if it isn't
Yeah, we're all signed.
Okay.
Kind of a small one.
It's a small one.
Just on that front page, so Craig Leslie? Okay.
It's just like a sink in. It's getting pretty light.
No, you gotta do this. Just give it a minute.
I was looking at your August eleventh one. Is that one you're fixing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was getting I was having to squint a little bit.
Thank you.
Oh, my pleasure.
Oh, my pleasure. [laughing]
So you just got the last day of high school.
A senior and a freshman.
Oh, um.
She just graduated from college and everything. Started her job in May, Juneish. Um, integrity has done in Edmond. And she's living in some apartment, the brand from Stillwater, it's a pin square mall or something. So she kind of drives, I think it's like fifteen point nine. Really, so it's a little area right there. Cheap for her. Close. She's enjoying, she's in this car, but she's about to start night, so she's about to, because I guess they rotate them. Like she actually takes every, she's going to show where he goes, but start nights pretty soon. She's like, I'm excited, but I don't know, like, how do I, like, how do you do that from?
Many body, that's a good thing.
I think she said it's from like seven P M to seven A M.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Your body will.
Do I?
Your body will.
That's what I was.
Yeah, but I don't get used to it, then it's.
She's in that C C U. So she picked that area to, right now. So she seemed, she's like, I've been a lot so far in that area.
The fire department in Tulsa, they do their shooting every night, they just, they don't want me reporting. They respond to the shooting.
Wow.
I don't think that they get it. They don't report that.
Well, they're supporting.
I would have never guessed.
Yeah, me either.
So senior is, he's a boy and he's going to start from radio on Tuesday, he's been in radio like three years now.
Was it eight?
A lot of engineering stuff.
Oh, pretty engineering.
Yeah. He's supposed to be doing some of the projects. Soccer.
Oh.
That's what he wants to do.
Oh, I didn't think he was doing the area.
No, he just, you know, I don't know, I guess, I think he's still figuring that out. I challenge him and he likes the freedom of the, you go there, then you don't have to be at the high school all the time, because you have a, like there's a, a longer break, and then he can go to the high school and he can like one, one or two classes at the high school semester for his last year. Something is like incur, I guess like incur, so. Are these areas done? Our youngest starts ninth grade, she's still at the junior high. And they just started.
Okay, so when are they gonna move fall of the, I thought they were supposed to.
Fall of twenty twenty-six to twenty-seven, just around when the high school's done.
Yeah.
And I think they might will still be in here and then, I think that'll be the first year when they're transitioning, everybody else like the next couple of years after that. They sent out some big email or a social media post last week or something about how the transition can happen. But they've started, they signed a new, um, it'll be seventh and eighth grade whatsoever. The junior high will be seventh and eighth grade.
Is, is, is that what they're doing, is moving the under class to the high, what high school?
The ninth graders will go to the high school and should be next fall or this year or something like that, when the high school's done.
Is it that many people, they can't move all the, all the middle schools to the high school?
All the what?
Or is it, uh, I guess ninth grade, never mind.
Yeah.
So six of them will just be out there some weeks.
Probably for like a year and like, they're gonna all slowly transition over, I don't know. It'll be fifth and sixth will be middle school and then K through fourths will be elementary.
Oh.
Right now it's K through fifth is elementary, so everybody will be, oh, I think it's that one. Everybody moving up eventually. But he's doing, I guess the school, I know he's doing some new program, aviation program. And he thinks he wants to do that stuff, and so you have to get in your freshman year, and this is the first year of operations, we got into that new aviation class. And he's doing soccer as well. Have you seen the rain, it's still our area of county, this is basically, I don't know, state.
It is, we have a lot of the reason, sprinkles, some of the.
That's what I heard.
Yeah, like in an hour. But like, well, they just keep it up there.
They put it for a dollar.
I've had all the.
Trying to follow along. Power, yeah. That's a poor area, it's almost. Maybe. Did check on it. Go over it. You did more. Oh, yeah. I think September.
Anything around the lake?
Yes, he better. I don't think his, um, doctor's quite signed off on yet, or had to come back yet. So it was a long drought, more, I figured it might come back, but it might be gone. Figuring it out, more and more each day.
So did it fall off? Yeah. Sorry.
Way, way to go.
I don't think it'll sign though. Yeah.
Need anymore? Hope you sent it here, that means it's closed, is it?
I'm gonna start the play when I'm already doing the check on it, yeah.
Okay, that's really, okay.
Yeah.
Shoot, I was figuring, I was thinking about it, like, is she talking about that? That's where you put that over that front part. I just love where you just did it, I never looked at anything so well.
Guys, I gotta run out of heat. Here is it, I want, really. I didn't realize how much damage you guys had.
She lived a lot for the, for the month maybe.
I think it's only about three hundred, four hundred pounds.
Yeah.
Do these tables need to be rearranged for budget for?
What?
Do these tables need to be rearranged for budget for?
Basically, they're still together. Any questions, Mr.?
Sorry.
Have you made it taken into the jury or no?
Yes.
So I always forget that you guys technically, the meeting until you guys finish signing.
Yep.
So you didn't enter a meeting?
Yep.
Let's go! Gotta rock it out.
I'm just here to turn on the recorder and.
Keep it.
Get some other.
Honey?
Motions.
Oh, you're just coming back here.
That's all I'm here.
Oh, come on now.
This season, there are two seasons they, they do. Do you like honey?
Honey?
Honey.
Honey, yes, I do.
So my parents get, my parents, they do bee hives. They got eight hundred pounds of honey this season alone.
How many hives did they have?
They got twenty-five, twenty-six. And, uh, they don't sell it, and so, they, they do have like, you know, here and there kind of thing, but they don't like farmer's market.
Yeah.
Why, so.
Have they priced honey?
What's that?
Have they priced honey?
Yeah, I, well, yeah, and that's why I told them, but they don't wanna make it a job.
Yeah.
So they have a, they have three, like, two or three tons of honey when they're raising. And so, whenever I go up there, I grab cases and hand them out to the people I know.
Okay.
I'll, I'll bring you.
I definitely, I mean, I'm paying for it.
Oh, okay, oh, you're good, you're good. Like, I mean, it for free, so.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it costs something, even if it's just a little bit of talk.
Well, like, like I said, it's kind of retirement, it's kind of enjoying life, so.
Yeah.
He gets, my dad, he gets done like twenty times each time, just because he doesn't try to wear it. He works in the weekend, that's actually, he does for, he has some. But yeah, I'll just bring you guys home.
Thank you.
Yeah.
They're in Kansas?
Yeah, up, um, up in the Conza Valley, so they live, they live just north of Junction City.
Well, they could still have it as a hobby and still sell it.
That's what I tell them, they're, so, when my grandparents passed away, my grandparent, my grandpa hoarded magazines, or like newspapers, right?
Yeah.
Like, nothing good, just like newspapers, so we have, you know, clean out that. Their joke to me is when they pass away, I just have to go through all the honey they have. So, but yeah, it's, it's definitely.
I mean, they could just find some at a farmer's market and say, look, I'll, give me two dollars a bottle.
They're, they're buying those like food grade, um, twenty, or two gallon tub or bucket things.
Yeah.
To put in. You go to the, some of these like smoothie shops, or some of these like small town like restaurants and stuff like that, they would buy that stuff.
Oh, yeah.
And.
Well, it's just kind of turned back sugar.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's what, so like, a lot of the ones I have are crystallized. But the best way, the only way to deal with that, like honey sits on shelves forever. All you have to do is put it, what I do is.
Warm water.
Yeah, I use a, a slow cooker.
Yeah.
And I just turn it on warm.
But like a crock pot?
The crock pot, yeah. And when, uh, it's just enough heat to, we're fine, but not, not make it fall apart, so. But yeah, it's, 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 I wish they'd sell it warm, but they'll sell it here and there, but it's, still is, they still have crap on that.
I mean, like, uh, you know, there's, there's, like, I've got an employee, he raises honey and some people that are turned, you know, they have honey in, Pawnee, there are places, they sell it at true value there in Pawnee, and I think like for a pint jar is ten bucks.
Yeah, yeah, especially local honey.
Yeah.
Like you go and you go to Walmart, and Walmart buys and sells everything at a, like, cut cost, even Walmart, you can't buy a jar of actual pure honey for less than like ten, fifteen bucks.
Yeah.
So, and usually it's still like this small.
If they, I mean, if they was, I don't know, whether they're putting it all in two and a half gallon food grade jar.
So they're doing, they do a lot of them in mason jars, uh, but they do do a good chunk of it now.
Like, court or pine?
Um, yeah, they have like a mixture, so.
I mean, if they sold a court jar, they could sell one of them easy for five bucks a piece.
Oh, yeah.
If they, if they just had a guy from the farmer's market and said, you give me five bucks, I'll sell it all to you.
Yeah.
And then it really ain't worth it, like, you know, it's like, all right, here you go, here's that.
Oh, literally.
Four, five hundred bucks.
That guy's still gonna make a profit.
Oh, yeah, double.
Yeah.
I mean, they'll sell it for ten easy.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, I, I get on them all the time about that, but, uh, but they didn't like, they're not, they just don't want me to work or feel like it's bad, so.
Well, that's, I mean, that's.
Gives me a.
I, I, I really enjoy woodworking, but I wouldn't wanna do it for a living, because then it becomes work.
Exactly.
Now, that, that, that doesn't mean, I, I would still sell myself, like, like if I made a little whatever, uh, I'd sell it, but.
Exactly, and that, that's kind of, but like I said, they'll do it sometimes, but they'll put on Facebook Marketplace every once in a while, and they get people to buy it, and, you know. A lot of people wanna buy it, but other than that, they don't, um, sell it, so I usually, what I'll do is, I'll get like cases of it, bring it home and then hand them out, so like, I had like two or three cases yesterday, I just dropped off at like lightnet stations.
Oh, yeah.
Just so, you know, I go over there and grab whatever you want, so. But I'm just trying to get rid of the ones I have in my house right now, so I can go.
Well, if they ever decide they don't like doing that no more, I'd like to up buy all their bees.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Really, okay.
Because I'd kind of like to, I, I don't wanna get into, you know, point hive, that's, you know, two or three hives, like, right?
Well, yeah, and as, as I say, I mean, I think they definitely would be, because they don't want as many hives as they have.
Yeah.
The problem is, my dad, my dad's good at it, because he's good at it. It's like, it's weird, it's like other blocks figure it out and show up. So they've had hives that were empty, that were just set up, ready for their, you know, the, the, um, the hive split. And he'll go there, and the new bees will come in from somewhere else to take over the hive in the store.
Oh.
So, I didn't really put that in, in his ear.
Yeah.
They live up in, like I said, near Junction City, but they come down the urban once in a while.
Yeah. Yeah, I buy a few hives if it's around the south.
Well, you got, you got property too, that it's good for them to be at on that, so.
Yeah, I've got, oh, uh, there's some hives out in the woods, I see it, I was watching during the spring. And, uh, so I bought, I've got a friend that works for Little Debbie, and they buy honey in these, you know, three hundred gallon totes.
Really, yeah.
I bought the tote, well, there's probably two gallons of honey, good.
Just left in it?
Yeah, I mean, you know, they're not gonna go through there, and it's probably what's all left on the sides and everything, and, and once it's through putting out the honey, they, they just can hang, hook on to the new one.
Really?
And so there's probably three gallons of honey in the bottom of it, well, uh, I was draining it to wash it out to put something else in it, and I drained.